Parents join us to lead the welcome to the party. Thank you for coming. Mrs. Zoll, can you call it off?
Yes, Mrs. Elder, here. Mr. Posner.
Here.
Mrs. Kozar, here. Dr. Lachlan, here. Mrs. Mayes.
Here.
Mr. Muller. Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Zoll. So listen, there's a report.
We have a resolution number 65 to approve the tax settlement appeal. This is a tax settlement appeal on residential property that simply reflects the most recent purchase prices of property. I suggest that you move on resolution number 65 to approve the tax settlement appeal.
Have moved.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in second, if we adopt resolution number 65. Any questions or comments with the motion? All those, favor them please, aye? Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, legislative report for Lachlan.
I have your vote.
Thank you. Under education planning, we'll begin with the school report. From court.
Good evening. Today I'm going to talk about the Project Fit dedication that happened over at the junior high on Friday, October 3rd. The dedication ceremony was held in honor of the Project Fit. Excel Health sponsored three sets of equipment to schools in the area, including Leitro, Norwin, and Franklin Regional. The equipment and indoor curriculum will help students improve the five components of physical fitness. And using the equipment, students are challenged to reach higher goals and improve physical fitness. The equipment is also accessible to children of families who are attending athletic events at our new complex as well. Hopefully get that extra physical fitness. In the high school, the student store is now stocked with all the 2014-2015 merchandise. And that includes a variety of snacks and drinks along with school supplies for students to buy throughout the day. And along with that, we have mugs, umbrellas, hats, and jewelry has also been added this past week. The store also has a wide variety of clothing items featuring these new jackets. The jackets are waterproof and are embroidered with the Wildcat logo on the front. And on the back, it does says "Wildcats." Symbol is so nice. And if you would want, jackets may also be customized with a name or a sports team member. And if anyone's interested in ordering anything tonight, you have catalog on the side table over there along with quarter court. And if you want to try on size of jackets, we have all sizes on the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be talking about homecoming which just happened this past week. Last week in the high school there have been many different events regarding homecoming. It started last Tuesday with Battle of the Halls. Battle of the Halls is created by class officers and we just decorated like the senior, junior, and sophomore hallway in like different themes. Last week, sadly, the juniors won. But they did an American theme, they outbeat us. So that was to keep in preschool spirit. And then on Thursday, student council sponsored the Smash the Car event to, it said like beat Spartans on the side. And the whole football team, cheerleaders, and various student body members, the Smash cannot smash the car along with Mr. Angle, Mr. Patasio, and the seniors. Next was the parade last Friday, there were four different clothes from different clubs throughout the high school along with the band, the cheerleaders, and the homecoming court. During the game, the halftime, the court was obviously honored and then Naomi Schwager was named homecoming queen. And then on Saturday, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., the dance was held in the Commons in Court area right outside the gym.
And Courtney was on the court as well.
I was. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation from the Marching Band, Jesse Nelson.
On behalf of the members of the Wildcat Marching Band, especially the student representatives, I would like to thank the Greater Leitro School Board for their continued support and recognition of our organization as a part of our school and community. This year, our dedicated percussion instructor, Mr. Rick Almond, was given the title of Assistant Director. He now stands alongside our bar instructor, Miss Kate Richards, sorry. Assistant Director, Mr. Josh Jordan, and Director, Mr. Tim Sherg, who day in and day out give their time and effort to the success of our organization. In a time where math, science, and reading have emphasis above all else, you have given use in mind and have allowed it to grow in our school, and we cannot thank you enough. With the resources you generously provided us, the directors, band parents, and students have been able to create an environment in which the life lessons, marketing, and personal discipline, and dedication to goals stand in the forefront. We thank you for your time tonight and your most supportive and continued support throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls. Enrollment report, it's Brian.
There.
It's there. It is.
It's not as exciting in October.
Thank you very much. Under educational programs, we have first through fourth on Red Ribbon Week activities.
So you have a background on Red Ribbon Week, if I could give a little background. Every year, the week of this year, fall weekend, October 21st through the 29th, everybody, every state in the country celebrates and actually has many activities that occur to help promote awareness about great decision making and the dangers of use of alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and violence. So this evening, we have students from all four buildings coming to present to talk about the activities that they have going on in their building. I think we've late heard how you went to school apart.
Hello, my name is Keian Chaney. I am a sixth grade student at Leitro Elementary School. This evening, all three elementary schools are represented to discuss what we do to raise drug awareness during Red Ribbon Week. You will hear similarities and differences. The theme this year is "Love Yourself, Be Drug Free." One of the activities at LES will be for students to write their names on hearts. And then Ms. Palmer, our teacher, will create banners using the hearts. The banners will be out in the front ceiling in our school lobby. These will serve as reminders to all students, teachers, and visitors that take care of each other themselves and it's important to stay healthy and drug free.
Hello, my name is Alexis Pujama and I am also a sixth grade student at Leitro Elementary School. Another unique activity to our school for Red Ribbon Week is a picture essay poem contest sponsored by our BTO. Students in kindergarten and first grade may draw a picture while students in grades two through six may write an essay or poem. The picture essay poem contest should show how the student and their family love, respect, and take care of themselves. How these actions make them drug free and why this is important. Officer Dirk and Rocky from the Lachlan Police Department will judge the entries and select a winner from each grade. The winning class will receive a visit from Rocky and a fellow of Rocky. The winning student from each grade will also get a gift certificate, a picture with Rocky, and a gift card from Palmer. The winner will be announced on October 29th. You will now hear from Mountain View Elementary School.
Shift a little bit so you can see them, I thought they were going to stand in their seat, but I'm not sure that you can see them, so. Come on, right up front.
Hello, my name is Laurel Suzuki and I'm a sixth grade student at Mountain View Elementary School in Miss LaPresty's homeroom. I have a few Mountain View Elementary School helpers with me tonight. Allison Bazar in Miss Capuzzi's homeroom. Mason Bazar in Mrs. Clint Chox's homeroom. Daniel Bazar in Miss Chichula's homeroom. Lucy Kramer in Mrs. Doling's homeroom. Ella Bolva in Mrs. Yanity's homeroom. Sophia Bolva in Mrs. Grace's homeroom. And Olivia Ulishny in Mrs. Hewitt's homeroom. All three elementary schools have themes for each day during Red Ribbon Week as a daily reminder about making good decisions. Many times, our parents have conversations with us centered around the themes. We get to dress the part to help with the themes and we have reminders during our morning announcements that help with making us think about being drug free. This year, our themes at Mountain View are Red Act. Wear your red to support Red Ribbon Week. Too Cool for Drugs. Wear shades in class. Drugs don't belong in your future. Dress for the cure you want when you grow up. Don't let drugs ruin your dreams. Wear your PJ, but no slippers, they can be dangerous in the school hallways. Team up against drugs. Wear your favorite sports team or sphere of wear clothes. Now, we will hear from Bagley Elementary School.
Good evening, my name is Holby. I'm a sixth grade student at Bagley Elementary School in Mrs. Zoll's room. I would like to talk about the Red Ribbon Week kickoff assembly we are having at Bagley. Joe Dosardo was a wide receiver at Saint LaSalle High School and had his sights set on a scholarship and playing in the NFL. He attended the University of Pittsburgh on scholarship, but assumed that the NFL began to dwindle as he battled with an addiction to painkillers, pills he took to aid a liver injury. As his addiction worsened, he moved on to heavier narcotics and eventually found himself too deep in addiction to continue his college career. Joe sought help, and with his newfound sobriety, he wants to help others who suffer from addiction. Joe will present twice at Bagley. He will first talk to students in grades one to three about decision making and what a good decision looks like. He will then discuss healthy choices with students in grades four to six. I would like to now introduce Ailah Sarsen, who will talk about some of the other educational activities happening at Bagley.
My name is Ailah Sarsen, I'm a sixth grade student in Mrs. Rush's class. Drug awareness isn't just for Red Ribbon Week. We also have the St. Vincent Drug and Alcohol Prevention Program. All month long, Mrs. Krenicki has been presenting lessons in our classrooms on topics such as drugs and alcohol, peer pressure, decision making, seeking help from adults, and bullying. Also, thanks to the grant Brianna Ha for won last year for decorating the front door at her house during Red Ribbon Week. Posters will be purchased and hung throughout the building to remind us of the effects of drugs and alcohol. A portion of the grant will be used to pay the $5 fee for any fifth or sixth grade student who receives a free or reduced lunch and would like to attend Leitro's reality tour. Approximately $500 has been set aside for this opportunity. Now, I would like to introduce Claire Horner to talk about the parent education piece of Red Ribbon Week.
Hi, I'm Claire Horner and I'm a sixth grade student in Mrs. Wuss's class. It's just as important to educate our parents about the activities to educate us. This year, Bagley Elementary is hosting a parent education meeting. Tony Marcahy, Westmoreland County Detective, and Tim Phillips, Detective Director of Community Prevention Services of Westmoreland, will discuss current and emerging drug trends, as well as the signs and symptoms of drug use. Parents will have the opportunity to view actual illegal drugs and learn about the different ways in which illegal drugs are packaged and marketed on the streets. At the same time, students who accompany their parents will have a special presentation in the gym. On Apothecine Con is a puppet show that teaches the students about things such as peer pressure, facts about drugs, medicine safety, asking pro, alcohol and other drug addiction as a menace, and addiction in the family. This evening's event will be open to all three elementary buildings. We are hoping for a big turnout because it's important to let our parents know what to look for as well. Thank you. I would like to now introduce the representatives from the senior high.
Good afternoon. My name is Reeve Bennett and I'm a eighth grader here at the junior high. I serve as the treasurer for the Greater Leitro Junior High School Council.
Hi, my name is Preston Voreyev and I'm the president of student council. This year, we will be sponsoring the door decorating contest with the winner receiving donuts and drinks. We, the officers and Mrs. Flossy, the school nurse, will be judging the door.
Our themes for the days will be Monday will be sports team, wear your favorite sports shirt or jersey. Tuesday will be twin day, no dress up, ask twins with your best friend. Wednesday, wear red, try and wear as much red as you can. Thursday will be neon day, wearing neon clothes. Friday will be a school spirit, wear orange and black day. Students who participate on this day will be entered into a drawing with a $50 iTunes gift card. I'd like to introduce the senior high.
Good evening, and I'm Hannah Siaka, I'm a senior at the high school. And I'm the president of SAD Club, which stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions. For Red Ribbon Week at the senior high, students will participate in spirit week and dress up in the daily themes such as Wear Red Day and Tour Day. Students who participate in that day's spirit theme may enter their name into a drawing during lunch and prizes will be awarded to the drawing winner. Also, facts about the dangers of drugs and alcohol will be displayed each day on the morning announcements. The school will be decorated in an observance of Red Ribbon Week. There will be a wall display at Commons area that includes activities students choose over drives. And giant red ribbons will be displayed throughout the school with messages about living a drug-free lifestyle.
Hi, I'm Leah Zikowski, I'm the vice president of SAD Club at the high school. Along with these Red Ribbon Week events, Students Against Destructive Decisions Club plans many other activities during the school year. These events are coordinated to encourage positive decision making by encouraging impaired driving with lights on for life day in December and the It Can Wait pledge to prevent texting and driving in September. SAD Club also participates in the Great American Smokeout in November and Kick Bus Day in March to encourage teens to stay away from tobacco. Finally, during the prom season, students are given a presentation on safe driving and are encouraged to make prom safe. In conclusion, SAD Club is a convention-oriented club and we hope to reach out to as many students as we can and encourage them to make good choices. Next is representative from the voluntary drug testing program.
Hi, my name is Hannah Henning. I'm a senior here at Greater Leitro High School and this is my second year of being a member of the Remembering Adam Voluntary Drug Testing Program. Last year when this program was introduced to the students, I immediately knew this was something I was interested in doing. I was a part of this softball program here at the school until I came across a bump in the road and encountered an injury. Since I wasn't able to be later on the field anymore, I knew I would be able to show off my leadership skills by becoming a part of this program. And even by participating in this, I would be able to be a part of something bigger here at Leitro and hopefully become a role model for my fellow classmates. When you get a group of high school students who are willing to throw themselves out there, say they don't have anything to hide related to drugs, that throws a pretty big punch. The process for remembering Adam program is quite simple. I had the opportunity to actually be one of the students who were actually tested. I say one of the students because the testing process is completely random. You're not guaranteed to be tested once, but you're also not guaranteed to be tested only once. I was called out at the guidance office where I was met with Mr. Shiver and my guidance counselor. I selected a ping pong ball by choice, which I then found out corresponded to the drug I was given to be tested for that day. After providing a urine sample and testing it myself as mistaken by my eye, I was shown exactly what I knew I was going to show. I was cocaine free. By participating in this quick process, I was showing my principals my teachers, my classmates, my family, that I am part of something bigger here at Greater Leitro, and that the Remembering Adam Voluntary Drug Testing Program is here to showcase my leadership role and to hopefully inspire other students to live a drug-free life. Thank you.
That was very, very well done from the students, thank you so much. You give inspiring messages and help that you give up to your fellow students also. Thank you for coming this evening, both the students and the parents, thank you so much. I was going to say you can leave, but I can see you're not going to.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just said to Mrs. Mayes that that presentation is probably going to be just a little bit more entertaining than what we were presenting this evening on school performance profile.
Georgia should speak here, so.
See, we have a chair back here. We will be doing a presentation on school performance profile. Last year was the first year that we presented the information as well pertaining to the school performance profile. The scores that we will be presenting this evening have not been public at this point in time. However, we do not foresee any changes in our scores. Our data is accurate. Something crazy comes down from a state to tell us different. And as soon as we know that public release, we will forward that information as well. If you remember, you can go to the Pennsylvania Department website and there is a circle that actually says School Performance Profile. Click on that circle, another circle comes up, and then there's a drop down menu that you can identify yourself as a, excuse me, a parent, student, teacher, or other. If you want to put other, that's fine as well. And you can actually look at every single school district in the state of Pennsylvania as well as careers, excuse me, in the state of Pennsylvania. So feel free, you can access that if the new scores aren't on at this point in time. We just want to do a brief overview here. The purpose of the school performance profile. In the past, teachers were evaluated on teacher observations. Okay, with the school performance profile, the teachers are also given a building level score for teachers and it becomes part of their teacher effectiveness score with the new observation model. And we will talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. But also, a couple of purposes as you can see, provides the parents as well as the community and the public information pertaining to the performance of each school in the state of Pennsylvania. And what it does for us here at Greater Leitro, it gives us an opportunity administratively as well as with the teachers to really look at the data, to see how our students have grown, to see areas in which we need to improve, and to encourage best practice. I mentioned the teacher effectiveness system, or educator I should say, effectiveness system because this applies for principals as well, as well as school counselors and school nurses. In this model, teachers are not only evaluated on observations, but as you can see by the slide, they are evaluated on teacher-specific data as well as elective data and building level data, which we'll talk a little bit more about as well. When we talk about building level data, we are talking about that score that you will hear about this evening that each building has obtained this school year. And with the evaluation system, or I should say the educator effectiveness system, we actually have 15% of that performance score is included in the teacher's evaluation, which that actually began last school year, the 2013 and 14 school year. And beginning with this year, your principal's evaluation model will, 20% of their academic performance will be added to their evaluation, or I should say a parent report. There are indicators that actually give you the score. And this evening, each principal will give you their building score and talk about some of their indicators. But if you can see, the five indicators, I always group the academic achievement as well as the academic growth worth 40 points each or 80 points. Many times, we always talk about achievement, student achievement. Well, it's not just good enough anymore to score advanced on the PSSA. It's also how much did that student grow from the previous year? And that's when we talk about the academic growth of the PBOs. Closing the achievement gap has a total of 10 points, five of which you see on the slide for all students closing that gap on student achievement, but also for underperforming students, students who have a history of underperforming, closing that gap as well. And there are other academic indicators, which Mike will speak about as far as attendance, graduation rate, and things such as that. The maximum score that you can get, or I should say that a school can receive, is 100 points.
So I just want to take you through those five areas that Georgia talked about, the five components of each school's school performance profile. There are two big ones. The first one that's 40 points is indicators of academic achievement. What is included in this component? Well, this is our performance on the PSSA, reading, math, writing, science, Keystone exams that are given. This is student performance on industry standards-based AC assessments like the HAWK and the NAMSSO for those students that are going to BoTech. It's also a look at how many kids are scoring at least 15, 50 on the SAT and 22 on the A-CAT. The SAT expects that 40% of all high school students that take that test are going to score at that level. One other thing that I want to point out to you, included in indicators of academic achievement, there is extra emphasis put on the number of students that score proficient or advanced in third grade. So that means the third grade scores get counted twice in this area. You might say, why the extra emphasis? Well, the reason why they're included twice is an extra measure of accountability for our kindergarten, first, and secondary teachers who don't have a direct state assessment that goes along with their grade. So again, that's 40 points out of the 100 points. Georgia talked about closing the achievement gap. There are two categories in which we measure our closure of the achievement gap. One is with all students. So if last year, 80% of the students at Bagley Elementary scored proficient in third grade on the reading test, that means 20% of the students did not. So you'll have to close that achievement gap with all students. Additionally, you have to look at historically underperforming students. What are we talking about there? We're talking about groups of kids that traditionally underperform, economically disadvantaged kids, students with an IEP, English language learners. So they take that group of students too, they see how less is left, close their gap. And those gaps have to be closed over a six-year period. Five points for closing the gap with all students, five points for closing the gap with historically underperforming students, 10 total points in this area. That's the second component and the third component. The fourth component is a big component again. Georgia talked about academic growth, this is 40 points. Again, they're going to look at the average growth index as an indicator of growth for students on reading, math, science, and writing, whether it's the PSSA in grades three through eight, or the Keystone exams that start with algebra, etc. Your AGI, the average growth index, is converted to a scale ranging from 50 to 100, and you get a score based upon your student's growth. One thing that Georgia said that I think is important to understand, just being proficient or advanced isn't good anymore. Even the advanced student is expected to grow one year within a year. So if they're at the advanced level, that means they need to grow beyond it. Don't ask me if you give you PBOs calculation. Mr. Mayes is a much better mathematician than I am. I'm not sure that he could help me with the mathematical calculations there. I think I have more faith in him rather.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. The last component, 10 points, is other academic indicators. And you'll see that these other academic indicators are sometimes specific to the level. And you'll see that these other academic indicators are sometimes specific to the level. Graduation rate is calculated only at the high school. Promotion rate is calculated everywhere but the high school. Attendance rate is used across the board. You see at the high school, they take a look at the number of students that you have in advanced placement or dual enrollment courses. We do not offer IB here at our high school, but that's included for those schools that do. And it also looks at your PSAT participation. You get points for kids taking the PSAT. So I believe this year we'll have 100%, or last year did we have?
Just half.
What did we have last year, Steve?
70...uh...hold on, let me check.
I didn't even put it on the spot.
Yeah, that's okay. 73.
73 percent. So again, 10 points, not a big component, but a component nonetheless, and it's other academic indicators. So a quick recap. I apologize if that screen being off. 40 points for academic achievement, plus five for each achievement gap that has to be closed, plus 40 points for the PBOSS academic growth, and 10 points for the last component that I gave you, 100 total points. You are scored out of the points that you earn. If for some reason you don't have closing the achievement gap data, your total points would be 95, and they score you out of 95. When we did this in 2012, 13, we didn't have closing the achievement gap data. So our scores were out of 90 points in some areas. If you look down at the bottom, though, any grade teacher gives extra credit. And of course, the state does, too, because they're all grade teachers. So you can...
He said it would be entertaining.
Flash chat. You can get extra credit for advanced achievement. You can add up to 1% of extra credit, which points to 1.500. You get that for the percentage of students you have advanced on math, reading, science, writing, PSSA, or Keystone. So at Bagley Elementary, last year, 64% of the kids were advanced in the fourth-grade science PSSA. So Bagley earned .64 points of extra credit in that one area. You also get bonus, the last thing there is for the kids that do well on the Nocti or the NAMSS. Again, same thing. Number of kids that are advanced, you can get up to one point there. You get 2% for advanced placement, though. So you take your grade 12 cohort, and the number of kids that scored 3 or higher, you can get up to two points. We do earn extra credit for all buildings. So I guess the true total score that you could possibly have is 107, if you are perfect. It follows up to their fourth grade cohort.
It's bad.
Yeah, it's bad. Any questions? I would let that as a question for Steve.
I could hear the question.
The question was, do we do more to encourage kids to take the AP exams?
Well, it's a double-edged sword. Where we're encouraging more kids to take the AP test, but we're also encouraging kids to take the dual enrollment courses. So when they take the dual enrollment courses, they don't really need to take the AP test. So, you know, it's...you know, you offer both, and let the student decide which way they want to go.
Bagley Elementary School, we'll start with Bagley, we'll take off the bed, I'll leave. Each school is going to make you through their current score.
At Bagley, this year, our score on AP score is 86.10. We had an increase in the number of students who were proficient and advanced in math and reading. And we did have a decrease in the number of students proficient, advanced in writing and science. Science was less than 100%. It was like 64 hundredths of a percent. This was our increase. In regards to the indicators of academic growth, that AGI, that like in Georgia had talked about, in science and math, we remain at the highest level, receiving 100 points. Unfortunately, in reading and writing, there was a decline. In our writing score, despite meeting the standard for academic growth, we met that standard, we met that year in year, it wasn't significant enough to get us the maximum score there. So we got 70 points out of 100, or translates to seven out of 10. So we did lose three points there from last year, because last year we were at 100, or the 10 points out of 10 points. Writing, we had a significant decrease in our scores. And we kind of...we anticipated that at the beginning of last year, and we started talking about the need in our building to focus on writing a little bit more. The group of students that we had last year, we saw the need to decrease the class size. So we did have...we added a fifth-grade classroom, so an extra fifth-grade classroom. So we saw the need, we knew there was going to be a concern, and it did come up that way. We lost 4.3 points there. So just with the AGI scores alone in our building, we did lose, was it 7.3 points? So that's a significant amount. So our concern at Bagley is that academic growth, we are going to be looking at pushing some of our kids to grow even more, especially our advanced kids. Despite the fact that we had an increase in academic achievement, because we truly did, we had more kids performing at advanced and proficient, and we scored more extra credit points issue than we had last year, we just were unable to make up that difference. So we did have a decrease in our score from last year to this year. So we do have a focus this year in our building with writing instruction. We recognized it last year, as I said, we had a committee that we formed, and we met this summer voluntarily. We had teachers who came in. We took a look at our writing curriculum, our writing instruction. We have set goals that we want a more consistent approach to writing, a daily approach to writing in our building. And we are working on that. Every Friday, we meet as a grade level or a department with the language arts, and we are focusing on that. And we are working on that to definitely improve our score and get some of those points back for next year.
Right, I'm at Lake Grove Elementary School. Our SPP score this past year is 92.4. It pretty much maintains consistency from last year. To get that score, we did show an increase in our numbers in proficient, advanced, in math, reading, and science. Our reading score, or I'm sorry, our writing score decreased slightly. Again, we are continuing to focus on writing also. Writing will be embedded in all of the ELA tests coming up this year. So it lends itself a little bit more of a focus in those grades three, four, and then six. Our indicators of academic growth, the AGIs, we maintain the 100 with math, science, and writing. Again, with the reading, we show the decline to an 82, so we went from a 100 to an 82. And our focus continues to be our reading instruction. In K-2, we are really working on those phonics and being able to grasp the concepts of reading, so that when they enter third grade, as Mr. Correntis said, those scores count in two categories, that students are actually able to be able to start comprehending what they read, that they can apply all of those skills that they've learned. So that we will be focusing on that. Grades four to six, we're looking at just really strong reading instruction, using our leveled readers more consistently in our small group instruction, and being able to practice our fluency and comprehension during full group instruction. And as far as...we are piloting a tier-three, if you remember last year, we talked about RTI, the different tiers. We're piloting a tier-three reading intervention. So it keeps students in our Storytown Reading Program, but it will pool them into a different intervention time for that third period of reading. And it is called the Wilson Reading Program. Our Title I teacher went for training this summer, three days of training, and she will be supplying that intervention to grades two through six. That's our reading component. And for math, we are...our math time is 80 minutes. We are going to look at teaching our whole group in 60 minutes, and really implementing that 20 minutes of small group instruction, because we really believe that that's where we get the most fed for our buck. So we're going to try to implement that piece of our math program that we have not been able to do so at this point, because it wasn't in the program. It's now Becky's turn.
Okay, here's Mountain View. We added a score of 88.9. As you can see here, we have an increase in the number of students proficient and advanced in science. However, we did see a decrease in the number of students proficient and advanced in math and reading. That was a very slight decrease. In writing, it was a little bit more. But in the area that we really saw down was in grade three reading. What I can tell you is, the grade three reading, unlike the others that are major cohorts of students, when you're talking about grade three reading, we're talking about different kinds of students every year going through that grade three. We know that grade three, which is now our grade four, is an area of concern. They are getting additional support within fourth grade this year because of the scores that we saw continually throughout their third-grade year last year. For our academic growth, which are the next two points, the indicators of academic growth in science and writing, and they both remained at the highest level. However, there was a decline in math and reading. For our focus, we have academic achievement focus is going to be on that historically underperforming students. Right now, we're not necessarily seeing these points yet for math and for reading. We are seeing it for science, and they were doing okay in science. But when I dig deep into our academic achievement for math and reading, I'm seeing that historically underperforming subgroup is not achieving what the other students are at Mountain View. So that's our economically disadvantaged subgroup, as well as our IEP students. So that is an area of concern, and it's something we are focusing on this year at Mountain View. The other area of focus is our academic growth for advanced students. We received a decent amount of extra credit for the advanced students. However, these advanced students are not necessarily showing us reasons to think that they are making that full year's growth. So we're getting the extra credit points for them, but they're not making the year's growth in the PBOSS scores.
Good evening. The junior high SPP score is 81.3. I'd like to talk first about some strengths that we saw in the data. 209 out of 305 students scored advanced on the seventh-grade math PSSA. 206 students out of 338 scored advanced in the eighth-grade math PSSA. 90% of eighth graders scored advanced and proficient on the reading PSSA. When you look at that group as when they took the seventh-grade test, their proficiency level was at 70%. So we saw a 12% gain in achievement in their achievement score in seventh and eighth grade, which I thought was good. 106 students took the algebra Keystone exam in eighth grade. All but one of those students scored advanced or proficient. 78 out of 106 scored advanced. When we look at ninth-grade biology, 145 students took the biology Keystone exam. All but one scored advanced or proficient. And 125 out of the 144 scored advanced, which I thought was outstanding. Areas of focus, PBOSS, and I think you've been hearing that through all three elementary presentations. Our seventh-grade math, as a whole, our advanced, proficient, basic students did not show as much growth as what was predicted. Our seventh and eighth-grade reading, advanced students did not show as much growth as what was predicted. And our eighth-grade science scores, 64% of the students scored advanced or proficient. And once again, when we look at the PBOSS growth for eighth-grade science, no levels met the growth that was predicted. Our improvements for this school year, we implemented the seventh-grade math and English lab. This is an extra period of math one day, and the following day they have the extra period of English. In this lab, we are focusing on developing critical thinking skills. We're changing the focus from students memorizing an algorithm to understanding the math. I think that one of the biggest problems that we're seeing, students are so focused on coming up with an answer, that they're not understanding the math on how they came up with that answer. So we're trying to change that mindset with students. We're using Chromebooks. Mrs. Pines was able to get Chromebooks for all seventh-grade math and English teachers. We're using those Chromebooks to help remediate and enrich students. Our seventh and eighth-grade science program, you pass the Science Fusion, which is a spiral curriculum that focuses on life science, physical science, and earth-space science. In all grades, we're continually aligning the curriculum to the PA Core standards. Teachers spent numerous hours this summer and fall aligning courses to the PA Core. This is the first year in the junior high for our seventh and eighth-grade PSSAs that they're based off of PA Core. And also, in the junior high, Mr. Crowley and I implemented data meetings. Teachers and administration are meeting to discuss and analyze data. We put data as a priority with our staff. During these discussions, teachers are sharing strategies and best practices that they use to help improve scores. Any questions for the junior high? I'd like to introduce the legend, Mr. Lattesia.
I'm sure you've already had enough looking at the data, but I will do this as quickly and as painlessly as I possibly can. Our score this year was a 90.3, which was a significant increase over the previous year. One word of caution that when we do these, you really can't compare one year to the next. You're talking about different groups of students. Even within the SPP score, for example, when we talk about the growth, and the first thing you're going to see there is an increase in the number of students proficient or advanced in biology. That's on the biology Keystone exam. Now, in this portion of the high school score, keep in mind that that doesn't mean that the student took that test when they were in high school. It's their score as a junior. So many of those kids may have taken that test when they were in ninth grade at the junior high. The junior high doesn't get any quote "credit," if you will, for that. They'll get it in their PBOSS, but not in their PSSA or Keystone, because they don't get that until 11th grade. So we had a nice increase there. And again, what I'd like to point out is, that helped us to improve our score. But keep in mind that that score is still below where the algebra and the literature are. So while they did get a straight increase, in fact, they both had a decrease of less than a half a percent, their actual scores are higher than the biology. The second component is the indicators of academic growth increased in algebra and in literature. This is the PBOSS, and that's probably where we had our greatest increase, was in the literature PBOSS. Now, you have to understand that in this category, you're talking about a different group of students than I was in the first category. When you talk about PBOSS at the high school level, it is only those kids who are taking the Keystone exam at the end of the Keystone regulated course. So for our literature grade, it's actually our sophomores. All right, so the PBOSS for literature is our sophomores. The PBOSS for our biology are only those students who did not take biology at the junior high and are taking it at the senior high. Our PBOSS for the algebra are only those students taking algebra at the high school and didn't take it at the junior high. So you're talking about different groups of students doing different things when you look at this result. When you look at the AP statistics, those are for the seniors. So you've got all different groups of kids. We did have a decrease in the number of students scoring advanced in both literature and algebra, but keep in mind that those students were also highly successful on the test. And the other area of decrease was in the academic growth, that's our PBOSS score in biology. The areas of focus for us are going to continue to align our curriculum and their assessments to the state standards. It's one thing to say we're going to align the curriculum, but we must also make sure that our assessments are going to be aligned, so that when we analyze the data, we can use that to help our kids, so they can improve in the tested areas. And we're going to continue to offer remediation for underperforming students. We're so thankful to the board, they...last year, in the budget, you provided us the opportunity to get a tutor for biology. We've always had one in literature and in math, but this year we have one now in biology. So we're hoping that's going to be able to help us improve the number of kids who are proficient in biology. proficient in biology. Another thing that we're hoping is that the next step, which will take place next year, our students will need to pass the Keystone for graduation, there is going to be the project-based assessments. So that's another whole avenue that we're going to be exploring, and we're preparing our tutors now to begin working on that area as well. So that remediation part will become very important.
Does anyone just stop help you with help kids? Well, I'm reading this here, and I'm so damn confused. You've got an increase in students proficient and advanced in biology, and then you go to a poor amount of time, and you have a decrease in other students.
In academic growth.
Then you got an academic growth increase, and here you got a decrease. I don't know what that means. In fact, I don't care what that means. Because any of us BS, help you help kids.
Well, I think to answer that question bluntly, it has to, because kids are going to need this in order to graduate, and so we've got to get them to proficient. And if we don't, then we have to help them on that performance-based assessment to get there.
So that bottom line, and continue offering remediation.
That's the most critical line, that's on that, on that slide.
There's all this crap with this data BS, help you get those kids to that remediation.
Yes.
All right. I don't care what my score is.
Any others?
Thank you. We know it's very confusing. In fact, Lake and I were sitting today looking at the presentation, and it's just like, oh my gosh, you know, how big can you go? But what Dr. George said, absolutely, with the data, when you really start digging into that data, and the key is the growth again, because you might have a student who's basic on a PSSA, but the year before was very, in your eyes, and talking teacher-specific, looking at the data, I thought I meant the basic, but then the growth that that student showed, you know, through the next score from the PSSA the following year.
And the other thing that we hear from parents, as I hear from parents occasionally, is, but what about the advanced students? What are we doing for them? And in this environment, we are doing something. We're forced to make sure that they also have a year of growth, because I think the tendency is, well, they scored advanced on the test, and we've done everything we can. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to say to our parents, no, we're drilling down on that as well.
Absolutely.
That's not being left out.
Just had a brief meeting with a teacher later the other day, and her biggest concern, she had wonderful scores on the Keystone for the bio students. But again, she said, we just can't look at the number of students who are advanced. How are we going to continue to grow those students?
And I think that's a, that's a good problem. It forces our teachers to be even better than they, you know, they can't sit on the floor. It's a, it's a good problem for improvement, that we have significantly under the students. It moves us more paranoid than remediation. Really.
I'm going to let you know when the scores are public. I know Mrs. Swire will order you an email. You can on that site. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, for standing up this evening. Item E on the agenda is to approve the Pennsylvania Educators Clearhouse Contractor Service. This is for online applications, and that's a yearly agenda item, so that will be on your agenda for approval next week. We have a lot of student field trips to approve this evening, I mean, that are on your agenda for approval, but we need to do one this evening, and that is Resolution Number 66, to approve the Kennametal Young Engineers Field Program Field Trip, because it is actually happening on Tuesday, the 21st, and we will not have our meeting until the evening of Tuesday, the 21st. So I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 66. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 66. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye. Anyone votes? That passes unanimously. Item F, hopefully, an agenda item for next week, and that is to approve the sixth grade programs and dates as listed on your agenda. And item number G is to approve overnight and out-of-state student field trips throughout the upcoming, throughout the school year, and there are, if you list it, please read through them. If you should have any questions, we'll certainly get someone to answer those. Okay, and our next Curriculum Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, the 21st, at 5:30 PM in Peoria Center before our regular meeting. Okay, and thank you for your attention during education and planning, and I'll turn it to Mrs. Elder for questions.
Thank you. First three items, the Treasury to record Kennametal bills, legislature transfer, and the acceptance of gifts for an internship agent. I invite you to check the attachments for those, and they will be on the agenda for next week. But I would like to see what time to give us a review of the timeline for the index, and that review that we have every year, but it changes a little bit every year because of the timing of the election, et cetera, and then also the audit.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. I'll be very brief. I'll just hit the major dates. If the school board decides to adopt the resolution, once again, which we've done the last seven years, basically states that we will operate within the index, we have to make that decision by January 29th. So the Finance Committee will continue to deeply discuss. We'll come forward with recommendations before we're prior to that. If we decide to adopt all the early preliminary budget timeline, then we need to adopt a preliminary budget by February 18th. That will enable us to apply for exceptions or go to a go-to referendum in the evening. The final budget is still due by May 31st, and the final budget needs to be adopted by June 30th. So those are the really the four critical dates for the Act One Index. The Act One, I'm sorry, the Act One timeline. The Act One Index has been released. This year, the base index is 1.9%, which is a 0.2% decrease from last year. And if you recall, the index is certified statewide out of the wage and employee cost index. Because our market value, first one, our A ratio is over 0.4, we get an adjustment to ours, so the adjusted index is 2.4%, which is a 0.3% decrease from last year. What that means to the school board, though, is that to stay within the index, you could increase the millage by 1.87 bills at a maximal, I should say, 1.77 bills, which generates roughly $632,000 a year. So in summary, we'll continue to review, we're just starting the budget development process now. We'll continue to report back to the Finance Committee. We'll come forward with recommendations on what we need to follow as far as resolution for the preliminary budget. More to come on that. The look wide, I just wanted to let everybody know, it started on September 29th. They finished up last, leave last Friday. They still have a lot of office work they have to do. We will have our annual planning report filed by October 31st, and hopefully have the completed audit for your review approval in January 4th. That's all I have.
Thank you. The Finance Committee minutes are attached to your agenda. You know, there will be a Finance Committee on Wednesday, and there's a fifth at 10:00 in the Edney Building, and that's the full part.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Excuse me, property and supply, Mrs. Cozart?
I don't know how to run this meeting. I think I heard that. It's a little bit out of the way to hold. We have attachments, 11, or 1.1 and 1.2, the information about the junior high, the variant of the junior high contract, which is very close to being completed, and you can see from the attachment, what is left of that, and also the athletic project. And some of those things are being held up by other things, so. And then we'll have two change orders as listed, and then the purpose of five weeks, meeting minutes from our September 25th meeting, our attachment. And our next meeting will be November 6th at 3:30, but I'm going to ask, that's also the same night as the other field, and I'm pretty sure the new is at that time. So we may have which to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozart. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lockwood.
Yeah, the fall sports recognition every Wednesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM, and that will be at the auditorium here. The loss of an agenda item, we are approving the this year's school clubs. And I just would like to add, those boys, the girls, soccer, have qualified for playoffs this year. It is the first time for them in 22 years, and the first time in school history they have made it in the same.
It's the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Lockwood. Community relations, Dr. George.
Mayor of the Community Parks and Recreation Commission is there, the October 18th. I'm sure Brianna Kerr goes live this one too.
Thank you, Dr. George. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, there's a summary on the WIU Board meeting that is attached. There will be an agenda item next week to authorize the joint purchasing consortium representative and alternate, which is of 2016. And there is an attachment for that also. And also, there will be permission to advertise jointly as a member of the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for 2015, 2016. That will also be an agenda item. And the next WIU committee meeting will be on Tuesday, April 28th, 7:30, in the IU meeting. That concludes that. We'll go back to Mrs. Cozart for the WCTC Joint Operating Committee.
Yeah, it's our meeting minutes between September 24th meeting, our attachment, and your agenda, and our next meeting is October 22nd.
Thank you very much. Word policy, PSB Liaison, Mrs. Elder.
Yes. Will he ask me to vote on first reading of two policies? They don't have significant changes, and this is to bring our policy into line with practices and the current questioning that has been done regarding some specific dates that we have cleared out on the admission to students also. And voting on, reportedly, you want those next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transcription, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. First, we need to review, maybe a question, how that is.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. I would ask the board to approve the CCL number 67, to approve the CCL contract 2015-2016.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 67. Any questions or discussion, unmotion? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye. Anyone votes? And that passes unanimously.
In our next meeting, if assumptions seem to be clear about CCLs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swire.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 68, which is the elimination of the computer technology personnel position under the compensation agreement.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 68. Any questions or discussion, unmotion? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye. Anyone votes? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 69, which is termination of employment, tendered employment as of October 17, 2014, for Sandra Locke, we hear expressions.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 69. Any questions or discussion, unmotion? All those in favor, then please say aye. Aye. Anyone votes? And that passes unanimously.
And next week, on the agenda under personnel, we will have, as listed, the substitute teacher recommendations for approval. In addition, the support personnel supplemental condition released upon the end of Smith. We have two resignations, one part-time secretary at Mountain View Elementary School, which is four hours per day, Melissa Batza, as well as the grade seven boys' basketball coach, Nicole Isand. In addition, we would ask the board to approve two AmeriCorps hires for 2014-15, Alyssa Jones at Mountain View and Paul Marble at Badley Elementary. We will have names for the support personnel appointments that are classified. If anyone knows, some pre-advertishment here, food service truck driver, if anybody knows anyone who might be interested in that part-time position, please have them call 4200, I394200, as well as part-time secretaries, four hours per day, five days a week, please give us a call. As well as the granting of tenure for one employee, Stephanie Serenka, who's a teacher, special education teacher at Mountain View Elementary School, as well as permission to advertise the board retreat, which will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, at 5:00 PM here at the CSC. There are some dates noted under other business. The first Breakfast of Champions on Night Note is 7:30, October 16th, and this Thursday. Other class play, which is 12 Angry Doors, will be held the 24th and 25th, next Friday and Saturday. Mrs. Alshouse has tickets for both nights. If you are interested in going, please make sure you see her tonight. The Bandohrama Concert is in the Senior High Auditorium on October 30th. The Archale, which Mrs. Cozart just mentioned, is November 6th at 6:00 PM here at the Senior High School in the Commons Area. The Coral Extravaganza, grades five and 12, which I think is the third year for that, I'm not sure, is going to be held November 13th, as well as the November Breakfast of Champions. Please note that the next October meeting will be next Tuesday, October 21st, not Monday as this one was, as well as the dates noted there for every day of our meetings this school year, for this calendar year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Swire. Anything else to contribute or wish to mention? Stand up in your agenda, and we'll see you next week. Good time.